Bonjour.
I do have one attendee online, Alex.
I think it's the same.
You bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, Alex is Heather's assistant.
Okay.
The principal.
Oh, he's with you?
Uh, she's with the owner.
And Heather may be on the phone, but that's.
All right, so you have, as well as the applicant, you both have people coming on Zoom here?
Uh, I just think it's the applicant time.
Yeah, and they're on.
And we're gonna have at least two, I think.
Two, I believe, right?
Yeah, I believe. That's what I was told a couple hours ago.
Well, they were both at the site visits.
Oh, they're already on there, Jody. Somebody says Jody Edwards.
Oh, there we go.
There you go. A pleasure meeting them.
And then I have a Heather Ha- Hassan that's showing.
That's the principal.
Okay.
So how is it that my name is showing up there?
They used your account, but your login's that I sent you.
That you sent.
Yeah, you can actually go on it.
Okay, I get it.
If you wanted to.
Okay. We're good. All you, Tom.
We're ready?
Ready to rock and roll.
We're on the record. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tom Smith. I'm the Picken County Hearing Officer. We are at five thirty East Main Street in Aspen for a hearing on the Midnight Mine Ranch LLC Activity Envelope and Site Plan Review. We have just come from a site visit. Um, what we're gonna do is, um, first hear from the, um, from Tammy for the county summarizing the application and the recommendation. And we'll hear from the applicant and then objectors. Um, everyone, um, should be aware that I've read the packet and familiar with what's in it. You are, um, not gonna cut anybody off, but you can assume that I'm familiar with written materials that have been submitted. Let's start, uh, first though by going around the room, um, identify yourself and your, um, representation so that we have that to the record.
For the record, my name is Jody Edwards and I represent Upper Midnight LLC, the objector.
My name is Bristan Peterson, uh, Principal of Rycor Associates. We are the general contractor representing the principal, uh, Heather Hassan.
I'm Nathan Waldron, also with Rycor and with Heather.
Suzanne Wolf, Community Development Director.
Um, Chelsea Ray Clark. I represent the applicant, Midnight Mine Ranch LLC.
Mike Kramer with Kramer Land Planning, uh, representing Midnight Mine Ranch LLC and Heather Hassan.
Bonnie Shiles, Picken County Community Development. I'm an assistant to planning and zoning.
I'm Tammy Cochin, Picken County Planner.
And on Zoom. Shall we start with, um?
Starting at the top, we have one Miss Jody Edwards.
Can you please speak your name?
Uh, yes, my name is Edward Vague. Um, I represent one of the neighbors.
Which neighbor?
Uh, Upper Midnight LLC.
Okay. Okay, next.
My name is Mary McCabe. I'm with Upper Midnight LLC.
And I have someone, I think Heather, is that correct?
Hi, everybody. Heather Hassan. From Midnight Mine.
Okay, he's the owner. Owner, applicant, is that right? Okay. So, uh, if you get cut off or you're not hearing anything, um, wave, wave your hand, we'll fix it. All right, I've had that happen. All right, so, um, now that we have that, Tammy, I'll turn it over to you and, um, let you introduce the application, summarize um, what we have, um, in front of us today.
Okay, um, so this is an application for a replacement of a non-conforming structure without significant changes, a GMQS exemption for replacement floor area and an activity envelope and site plan review. Um, so on screen we have existing conditions of the site. It's pretty small. Um, we did just do a site visit and everyone's pretty familiar, so I'm not gonna go over existing site. Um, here is the proposed activity envelope. Um, zoom in a little bit to the screen here. So what's being proposed in detail is they are asking to replace the pre-existing legal non-conforming structure, the single-family residence, which contains seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine square feet with a new, um, single-family residence of five thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet within the exact same footprint. Um, that replaced residence will be raised one foot above the floodplain. It would comply with the floodplain standards and the height is ultimately gonna be lower to comply with height standards. They're also requesting to replace the pedestrian bridge, which spans from the house over to the secondary driveway access, um, in the exact same footprint, same size. Uh, they're also proposing to improve the existing driveway to comply with fire departments and county standards. Um, but essentially it's the same exact, uh, footprint. It just has some, a pullout um, and the grades are changing. Uh, they're also asking to replace, uh, these large areas of non-native sod and lawn with more native species of red carian mixes, um. And they're going to replace this existing accessory structure, which has uh, an illegal dwelling unit in it right now, um, replace the same footprint with another accessory structure, which would be an art studio. Um, other things that are being proposed are, um, removing a propane, a buried propane tank in the fifty-foot Castle Creek setback. Um, they're gonna abandon the O W E T S that's within the Castle Creek setback and replace it outside of the hundred-foot setback. Um, bury three water tanks, um, for irrigation and fire purposes beyond the hundred-foot setback and just do other general improvements such as, um, improving the pond, the water feature, um. And, uh, what else did I forget? Um, replacing a lot of the utilities, some of which will go into Midnight Mine Road, such as the overhead electric line. I think that's, that's the gist of it. Um. It's important to note that the floor area will be reduced from the permitted, um, ten thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet on the entire property to approximately seven thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet. Um, and, um, this was referred to numerous, um, referral agencies, most of which have commented and we've included all those comments in the, um, packet. Um, what wasn't included in the packet was a letter from Chelsea Clark, which I did distribute, um, and Jody got and Tom got earlier this week. Um, do you need me to go through the background, like the history of the parcel and permits?
Not much for when people speak, you can raise that if it's an issue.
So staff did review this application for, um, activity envelope and site plan review, which deals with in chapter seven of our land use code that it complies with all the chapter seven provisions, um, which include the steep slopes section, um, site preparation and grading, water courses and drainage, wildlife habitat areas. Um, I mentioned the floodplain hazard, um, and that the house will be rebuilt and comply with the floodplain standards. Um, it was also reviewed for a fluvial pan, um. It was sent to CGS who found that it was within a fluvial fan hazard area and so the applicant appropriately responded to CGS's letter and had a analysis done, um, and within that analysis um, findings and recommendations were provided. And so CGS then reviewed that analysis and um, agreed with their findings and also provided additional recommendations and all those have been, um, conditioned within the draft, uh, determination. Um, staff found that the application complied with the landscape and vegetation protection section, um, being that they're replacing a lot of the non-native sod with native species. Um, implies with the scenic protection area standards. Uh, most of the site won't be visible from Midnight Mine Road and a lot of the existing mature vegetation will stream the house from that roadway. Um. And then, you know, I'll jump to the GMQS exemption for replacement floor area, as I mentioned, um. This house contains, or the property contains approximately ten thousand five hundred and forty-six square feet of gross floor area and that has been documented to be permitted, um, from building plans from nineteen ninety-three. And so pursuant to section six thirty-one ten, that floor area can be replaced. Um, the applicant is proposing to actually reduce that floor area considerably to seven thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet of gross floor area. They're by complying with that code section. Um, the other important code section to note is the river and stream corridors and wetlands section. Um, so this is, as I mentioned, a existing single-family residence, existing, um, accessory structure that's all been permitted. Um, and approximately one-third of the residence is within the fifty-foot creek setback. Um, most of the single-family residence is all within the one-hundred-foot creek setback, as you can see on the screen. Um, we pointed this out on site, but this is, this line here is a hundred foot and this is the fifty-foot setback. Um, so within that section seven twenty eighty, it provides that a legal non-conforming um, improvement may be replaced within the, um, stream setback with no changes to the existing footprints. Um, and staff found that the replacement that is proposed is totally within that existing footprint. Um, if not less, it looks like there's approximately a seventeen percent reduction of that footprint, um. And that brings us to the last section that we reviewed, which is the restoration, repair, reconstruction, replacement of model additions, alterations to non-conforming structures, um, um. And that, I believe, is what, uh, Jody is objecting to in that section. Um, staff found that, um, pursuant to basically, um, section nine fifty twenty C in particular, a replacement structure that is a legal non-conforming structure may be expanded, repaired, restored, reconstructed as long as the activity does not increase the non-conformity. Um, and all in all, staff found that it decreases the non-conformity and, and height, um, footprints and floor area. Um, and that the applicant is, um, yeah, it's, um, complying with that section. Um, it was additionally brought up that it's a totally new architecture style, a totally new um, structure and that it should be considered a significant change. Um, and staff has, does not agree with this, um, and it believes that it does comply with nine fifty twenty, um, and that the code does not consider architectural style and those changes. So with that, staff has recommended, uh, that the hearing officer approve the Midnight Mine Ranch LLC application, um, based on the conditions within the drafted determination.
And, um, since the packet went out, would you, uh, are you recommending any changes to the draft, uh, hearing officer determination?
I don't, um, on site, there was mention of maybe considering a finding in the condition associated with that fiber optic line. Um, which.
We'll let the parties address that and see where we go. Do you have, uh, any particular comment on that, or do you wanna just wait and see what we hear on that?
Um, that's.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so I'll turn it over to the applicant, Chelsea or Mike, whoever wants to take the lead.
Yeah, I'll go first.
Okay.
Um, Tammy, is it okay if we?
Oh, yeah.
Um, display our screen. We've got one slide to show, Tom. We're gonna, we're gonna keep it concise. Let's make sure I'm in presenter mode. Okay, thanks. Mike Kramer, uh, Kramer Land Planning, uh, helping Midnight Mine Ranch LLC. Um, we just wanna quickly go through the code compliance sections, Tom, and Tammy did a great job explaining it, so we'll be, we'll be brief on it. If there's any questions on previous land use history, that this one does have, have quite a bit and just, just let us know if you want us to go through any of that. So section twenty twenty, uh, seven twenty twenty, uh, steep slopes, uh, the activity envelope that we're proposing avoids these steep slopes with the exception of some man-made anomalies that, uh, we've included in our civil engineering analysis uh, verified by roaring fork engineers, our civil engineers. Uh, seven twenty thirty, water courses and drainages, but you know, with the exception of Castle Creek, this property does not contain any other major water courses and our civil engineering plans show compliance with this section and as Tammy just mentioned, seven twenty ten also. Seven twenty, uh, forty floodplains, uh, the existing residence is within the castle, the hundred-year Castle Creek floodplain. Um, in the rebuild, the proposed replacement residence will raise that, uh, first floor elevation one foot above base flood, flood elevation, eight thousand two hundred and thirty-eight point three feet. So we'll, we'll be bringing the new residents into compliance with this, with this code session. Seven twenty fifty, we got, um, the procomists back from Colorado Geological Survey. They identified the fluvial hazard zone and we, uh, provided that scour analysis for more in fork engineers. Uh, we've read the, uh, draft hearing officer approval, um, from, uh, the comdev department and we agree, we can comply with those recommendations at boat impairment. Uh, properties in a low wildfire hazard zone, uh, we can comply with the code and, uh, the requirements of the Aspen Fire Protection District and we show those on our site plan. Seven twenty eighty, river stream corridors and wetlands. Um, you know, the previous residence has a number of building permits, um, issued to it and it is existing legal non-conforming because it sits within that setback and we acknowledge that. Seven twenty one twenty scenic view protection, uh, you saw from the site visit today, the, the existing residence and the proposed won't even come close to breaking the ridgeline. Um, and we will utilize indigenous colors for the future residents too. And then lastly, um, nine fifty twenty, uh, replacement of a non-conforming structure. You know, we just wanna highlight this. This is a, a significant, uh, reduction. The existing residence that sits within the hundred-foot setback of Castle Creek is seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine square feet. And we are going to reduce that to five thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. The height and bulk of the residence is also reduced. Right now, the residence, we've measured it at, as non-compliant with, uh, zoning dimensions. Uh, and the new residence will comply with the twenty-eight foot height limit. And then also we are proposing a, a footprint reduction and that equates to seventeen percent of footprint reduction. Um, so these are the applicable code sections that we wanted to get on the record. If there's any, um, discussion that we'd like to have about the fiber optic cable, um, we're available for that, Tom. Um, and I think we'd like Chelsea and then Bristan to go next so that we can, um, just, um, get a couple more things on the record. But when you're ready, we can, we can absolutely talk about the fiber optic.
Putting that aside, uh, so if you, if the application is approved, are there any conditions in the proposed determination that you take issue with?
No, we liked it. We thought it was well-written.
Chelsea's a?
No.
Back here, okay.
Changes.
So you have other members of your team, or you want?
We would like Chelsea.
Us to hear from, Chelsea?
If you could briefly address.
Yeah, I mean, you can either wait till J- Jody presents or you could present now at your, at your, uh, choice.
If I speak now, may I reserve the right?
You don't have a rebuttal.
All right, head. Um, thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, so, uh, you've heard that the staff's made a recommendation and it's been seconded by both the comdev directors every day and the county attorney for the format of this hearing. Um, the applicant's done the work to prepare a very valid and compliant application. It's not just simply in compliance with the land use code. But it improves the site and reduces overall impact and moreover reduces non-conformity. We have what we believe is a bad faith objector who has interfered not only once, but twice on weak and invalid legal grounds, um, exposing personal preference, exhausting county resources. And that leads us to this objection hearing today. It could be unnecessary as our team has reached out multiple times to not only the objector's attorney, but to the objector's entity, Upper Midnight LLC. And that's principal directly himself and has refused any personal audience with us to discuss things such as the fiber optic line until this time, which we feel is an unnecessary ignorance of the opportunity to act neighborly, seeing as how they're going to be future neighbors. I've responded in writing, so you have my letter, um, to the director's weak legal arguments and we will continue to do so in my client's interest until this application is fully approved. You've also heard from the staff and experts, Bristan will speak after me, uh, to continue to discuss the benefits of the application. And if I were to repeat what they'd say right now, it would be redundant. Thus, I want to just simply summarize that we agree with the staff's supportive findings. We agree with the determination as written. And I reserve the right to any rebuttal following Mr. Edwards' discussion. And one just housekeeping note, I didn't hear at the beginning of the record whether this meeting had been properly noticed. So if we wanted to, or needed to put that on the record, we could do so at the end or when we have the time.
Yeah, we have, now that it's been noticed.
Okay, good point. Thanks. Bristan?
Sure. Hi, my name is Bristan Peterson. I'm the, uh, principal of Rycor, uh, general contractor, um, in Picken County and city of Aspen for over thirty years and have, uh, worked on, call it the, the development team of numerous applications within Picken County. Uh, I can think of five up and down, um, the corridor of, uh, of Castle Creek specifically. And, um, when I look at this holistically, just as a, as an informed, you know, layperson, but professional in the, in the repurposing business of these assets, I look at what Heather has created here and I find a couple anomalies. One, the fact that, um, the seller of the property is the one objecting, okay? To me, just that's, I'm just emotionally distraught about Jody's client, um, for what it's worth. I haven't met the gentleman personally, but I could share with you, he has the reputation up and down the Castle Creek Valley of objecting just because he can. And this is the gentleman that sold Heather the property. So fundamentally, I just, I have difficulty with people that have those type of principles in this business. Uh, second of all, um, when I look at this application, what you have Heather doing here, she's trying to build a home, okay? This is a home for herself, for her family. She has two young boys. Her desire is to, um, is to raise those boys in this property, uh, uh, enroll them in Aspen, Aspen Country Day School. And I literally had to talk Heather off of a ledge the other week where she's like, you know, I've had it. I, you know, I wanna be invited into community. I wanna be friendly with my neighbors. I've tried to reach out. I've tried to extend the olive branch and none of which has, has occurred. So when I look at this, I look at a property that, and they're all over the county. The purpose of the land use process and, and this, this, this process is to bring non-compliant properties to compliance. And they're all up and down this valley. We build and develop them every day. I've probably done thirty or forty of these, of these things. But I look at it, we're reducing height, we're reducing square footage. We're, uh, increasing the elevation of the first floor. We're bringing life safety amenities to the property so it doesn't tax, you know, my buddy Rick Ballantyne, who's the fire marshal here, doesn't put emergency providers at risk. Um, I look at the non-conforming aspects of this and I furthermore look at, um, what Heather has done. She basically has taken a structure of seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine square feet and reduced it to five thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. That's a reduction of two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine square feet. And when you look at the economic association of that, this is a client that is not trying to push the envelope and build and develop the largest project they can. That's basically a thirteen million dollar valuation that Heather is saying, you know what, I'm not gonna build the maximum. I'm gonna reduce the size of this house. I just want my home. I want my footprint. And she's effectively leaving thirteen million dollars on the table in this process. And that is a significant ask on behalf of, of, of Heather as the applicant. I, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that we have an anomaly as an applicant. The people that we usually deal with is let's build the biggest house, the largest house that we can get within a footprint to preserve that valuation of the asset. So I think that's an important process to, uh, to undergo. With regards to the, the fiber optic line, uh, we're well, uh, aware of the fiber optic line in there. There's construction solutions uh, to protect that fiber optic line. We can encase it in concrete. We can encase our crossing of, of, you know, we're talking about a, a septic line that, uh, effectively is about two inches. We can encase that in concrete. Fiber optic lines, uh, tend to have a lifespan of anywhere between forty-five to forty years. Uh, it's Heather's intent that after she develops this house, then we will tie into that fiber optic line and Heather will pay her associated costs. Uh, because I understand that was a private line put in by, uh, uh, by Decipher Technologies at the time. So there's, uh, there's construction solutions to, uh, protect the objection that I heard in the field for the first time to make sure that that fiber optic line and that investment of that fiber cable, uh, will, will be there for another forty, fifty, sixty years.
Group, group, Bristan, and Tom. What, what Bristan is, is pointing out is that, um, we spoke to the civil engineer before the, after the site visit before the hearing and we heard that the applicant was concerned about the fiber optic line. The civil engineer has come up with a, a solution where we can encase that in concrete. And there's a couple different scenarios. One is that we can encase the fiber optic line in concrete to help protect it. Other scenarios, we can encase the, uh, the affluent line in concrete to help protect it or we could do a combination of, of both of those. But those are, those are things that the civil engineer is comfortable with and we can offer to the applicant to help us.
Yeah, I could share. We, we built projects all over the place, both in the city and in the county that have easements and fiber optics and buried underground cables and utilities and, and there are construction solutions to the objection that, uh, we've done hundreds of times over. So that's all I have to say and thank you for, uh, for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else on your side?
That's all we have. We agree with the resolution and we hope that you approve it.
Great, and I'll let the character speak, um. Before I start though, uh, before you start, Jody, um, on this fiber optic issue of as this comes up and I'm thinking about it now today for the first time. Um, to the extent that it involves the use of a private easement, it may not be a proper subject for me to make a decision on. So if you think that it is a proper subject for a condition here, I'd like you to address that issue because oh, if, if it's, if it's a question of how the easement gets utilized between the two parties rather than whether there's a code issue with the the use of the easement, those are two different things. So I'm, I'm open to the use of the easement, those are two different things. So I'm, I'm open to considering something that may be appropriate here, but it may be one of those things that between the parties to work out, or if there are construction, um, specifications that will come into play, that building permit, that may be the other way that it gets addressed. So anyway, I'm just throwing that out. So I turn it over to you.
For the record, Jody Edwards, representing, uh, Upper Midnight LLC. First on the fiber optic, I agree with you that the, the easement agreement is a private agreement. It's not really something that is, um, the subject of this hearing today. Um, nevertheless, it's not unusual to have construction-related conditions in a determination or a BOCC resolution, et cetera. And if you do feel inclined to approve this application, we would request that you include conditions in order to protect that fiber optic and, you know, Bristin's much more qualified than I am to tell you what those are. Um, I don't know what they should be, but uh, hopefully we don't need to get there because hopefully you'll deny the application. Um, so, um, personal attacks aside and, um, uh, other subjective comments aside, I'm going to try and focus on the legal issue. Um, and bring it back to there. And there's really only one legal issue. And I'm going to give everybody a copy of section five, I'm sorry, nine fifty twenty of the code, which is the only thing I'm talking about. It's part of the record. It's, because the code's part of the record, but I just wanted it to be easy for everybody to look at it real quickly. So that's the only reason for the handout. Um, in the application, in the title and page nineteen and pages fifty-one through fifty-two, the applicant asserts that they satisfy all three of the requirements of five, I'm sorry, nine fifty twenty of the code, which is in front of you. In particular, those are subsections A, B, and C. Um, applicant's counsel also asserts the same in the text associated with footnote four of her letter. In my objection letter of, um, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, I show very clearly that the application does not satisfy subsection B, as in boy. And particularly what I'm talking about there is the second sentence. The second sentence of subsection B says, "The restoration may include insignificant modifications to the original design if the community development director finds that such modifications are necessary to allow the use or structure to meet basic life, health, safety, I'm sorry, health and safety standards of the adopted, adopted building code." Now, I went through the entire application. I mean, community development director's sitting here today. But I went through the entire application, page by page. I went through all the attachments in the record and I do not see any finding in the record that the existing structure must be modified to meet life, health, and safety standards. So that is lacking. Subsection B, as in boy, has never been, um, satisfied in this uh, on the record, uh, despite what's represented in both in the application and in counsel's recent letter. Now, for the first time on, must have been Friday, I guess, um, I saw staff's memo and staff's memo completely ignored sub, subsection B and instead focuses on stu- subsection C, as in cap. Um, and it took me a little while to figure that out. And finally, what I realized is what staff is saying is that in order to comply with nine dash fifty dash twenty, what you have to do is satisfy subsection A, that is, get a building permit within two years of demolition or destruction. And either subsection B or subsection C. Not that you have to comply with all of A, B, and C. Um, now that, I, I understand why staff is saying that, but that's not what the code says. What the code says, when you look at it, is that not, eh, eh, very top, first sentence of the whole code section, "A non-conforming structure may be restored without significant changes subject to compliance with the standards." It doesn't say subject to compliance with two out of three standards. Doesn't say compliance with one or two, or it, it says the standards. So you've got to comply with the standards, all three of the standards. Now, we kind of have to, um, zoom out a little bit to understand what I'm saying. Um, the general rule at seven dash twenty dash eighty is that you got to be a hundred feet away from, uh, Castle Creek. Section nine dash fifty dash twenty is an exception to that general rule. Statutory interpretation requires by law, and I cited it in my objection letter, that, um, exceptions must be narrowly and strictly construed. So the exception, which is nine dash fifty dash twenty, must be narrowly and strictly construed. Strict construction of compliance with the standards means all the standards. It doesn't mean two out of three of the standards. And, um, you know, a finding that they satisfy two out of the three and completely ignoring the third standard is not sufficient for a strict construction of this code as written. Now, county could have written it different. County could have said, um, you know, a non-conforming structure may be restored, replaced, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, subject to compliance with substandard A and either of B or C. But that's not what we, what it says. That's not the way the code was written. Um, we are left with the code as it's written today. Now, applicant could have requested a, um, an amendment to the code. They didn't. The county could have written it a different way. They didn't. You know, this is the code we're left with and based on inter- statutory interpretation, we have to give it a strict construction. Strict construction requires compliance with the standards. It's, has not, they have not satisfied the second standard, therefore it has to be, uh, denied. Thank you.
If you want to respond? Chelsea?
Yes, please. Um, first I'll ask whether staff wants to respond as, um, Mr. Edwards has pointed out that if staff took position in their memo to overlook Part B, but.
I don't think we need to hear from staff. Go ahead.
All right, um. I'll start at the top of the example of the text that Mr. Edwards has distributed. Um, as he points out specifically, this sentence, this first sentence does not say all of the standards in this section. So if we're getting technical, this sentence does omit the word "all" of. Therefore, we're not looking to satisfy A, B, and C. The "and" is not included. So if you're looking for strict statutory construction here, you're missing the word "and" and you're missing the two words "all of" that would then otherwise support your argument. We disagree and those words are not included in this section of the code. With respect to Part B, second sentence, the second sentence focuses on restoration, not replacement. We're proceeded, we're proceeding with an application for replacement, not restoration. Staff has recommended that we proceed with this application under nine fifty twenty because we're replacing the structure, which is absolutely allowed and specifically provided for in Parts, Part C. If you would, would the back history of this part of the code, you would understand that Part C is broken out to allow for replacement on all of the technical specifics that you need to satisfy with respect to wildfire mitigation, setbacks, TDRs, that's why subsection C is separate from the B. And again, the second sentence that Mr. Edwards is focusing on is specific only to restoration, not replacements. We're working on replacement here today, which is absolutely above. With respect to the exceptions to the hundred-foot setback, it's county precedent. And in fact, the location at seven sixty-one Conundrum Creek Road in the last two years was approved for replacement within fifty feet of the setback. So we believe that county precedent all over, as Bristin Peterson suggested, is also um, demonstrative of the county's policy with respect to nine fifty twenty C. And regardless, there will be redevelopment at this site. And we think it's in the best interests of all parties involved, including the objecting neighbor, that the structure is replaced, not restored. So if he's trying to force us to simply restore the property and within the hundred-foot setback, you'd end up with a much weaker and less impressive and less safe and less efficient and less code compliant and more non-conforming structure than if we were to simply replace. So that, once again, we support the determination and staff's recommendation. We fully disagree with any argument that this application is not compliant with the standards. Not all of the standards, but the standards as written in the code section and should be approved. Thank you.
Yeah, Nick, can I just address?
No, no, please not.
Do you want to say anything more about the fiber optic issue?
Um, I do. I just want to say too that we're willing to work with the applicant on it. And we do have a survey, Tom, that shows the fiber optic line is outside the easement. And that should be part of our consideration in working with the applicant.
What do you mean outside the easement? It's not properly located?
That's correct.
So whose property is it on without an easement?
Our property.
That's the case.
So who knows if the, I don't know if the best solution to that is going to be leaving it where it is and getting another easement or put moving it to being within the easement, but that's not going to be for me to decide here. Okay, um, briefly, because I don't want to get into a lot of
Yeah, I, I just want to.
emotional stuff here.
I know, I understand.
I gave you some leeway in your comments about your feelings about
Yeah, thank you.
the objection and.
I just wanted to address, uh, uh, restoration versus, because there's some touchpoints here in the code. And why, uh, Heather, um, it's in the best interest to actually remove and replace this structure. Uh, number one, this structure does not have the proper infrastructure to adequately sprinkle the project. Number two, it doesn't have proper fire, uh, and emergency access to the structure. Number three, uh, when Heather acquired the home, uh, the structure is laden with asbestos that we had to get a state permit to remove all the asbestos throughout the house. Uh, number four, there's footings in the existing house that are substandard, don't even meet proper frost depth. Uh, number five, the elevation, uh, does not go above the hundred-year floodplain. So to restore this house, to raise that first floor elevation with, uh, with insufficient footings, insufficient structure to support the house is virtually impossible without removing and replacing the house. And the last thing is, uh, the roof structure. Uh, the roof structure currently doesn't comply, uh, with existing, uh, snow load capacities. And as we know, this is in a microclimate, the amount of snow that, uh, is experienced up there. Uh, uh, this past winter, I think I saw feet, eight to ten feet, uh, of snow in this location. Um, and that's all.
All right, um. Does anybody have a dying need to say anything further or?
Uh, maybe Heather.
Zoom, anybody? Um, is Heather still on? Heather, do you want to say anything? Um, or are you satisfied?
I just want to say.
Your agenda is ahead to say. Go ahead.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to say. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Again, okay, great. I just want to say, one, I want to say thank you for everybody giving the time today. Uh, um, and two, I, I just want a home for my family, my kids. I'm not trying to do anything, you know, extraordinary or crazy. We just want to move to Aspen. We love it there. Um, I work really closely with the Aspen Hospital. I'm in healthcare. Uh, my partner's a surgeon and we just want to be a part of the community. And, you know, the gentleman who sold me the house, this is his second objection. I don't know why. Um, I've been trying to reach out to him just to even have, eh, dinner, lunch, a coffee, and she doesn't respond. I don't know why. Um, but yeah, we're just trying to live in, in Aspen. That's it. And trying to do everything that's up to code and, um, that's proper, which we have, and that's it. So I just want to say thank you for listening to us and hearing us out.
Okay. Do either of the other remote participants want to add anything at this point? Or are we good? Can't hear you.
I'm sorry about that. I was going on mute. We're a little bit confused because we've read the application and it states multiple times, including in the title, that it is a restoration. Um, can you kind of explain when, where, how this became a replacement and why that wasn't addressed within the application?
Well, I don't think your, um, I think your lawyers addressed that. Both attorneys have addressed that and I'll address it in my comments, okay?
And Tom, we, if this is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Um.
Mm-hmm. I don't think we have anyone else from the public on Zoom. We don't have anybody uh, from the public present in the room, so I guess that takes care of public comment. We don't, we don't have any. Okay, so everyone's had their, uh, opportunity to speak and so I'm going to close the public, uh, hearing portion of the record and bring it back to myself for a decision. Um, so I'll address first the, the, uh, fiber optics question. Um, I think that the, uh, uh, determination should have a condition that the, um, um, the issue of the um, fiber optic cable should be addressed when, um, uh, at building permit or if it's excavation, I'm not sure which, but whatever, whatever your permit is, is considered in connection with that, uh, utility line and, uh, but that, that the county engineers should be satisfied that there isn't any uh, threatened damage or injury to the fiber optic line. Beyond that, it's up to the parties to address the easement issue. And I'm not going there. Um, so, uh, let, let me, let me, um, address this legal issue about the hundred-foot setback and its applicability to this application. Um, first thing I want to say is that I don't think there's, um, um, any bad faith in the, in connection with the, this issue being raised by the objector. Um, there's, there's plenty of room for um, different opinions about what this, um, regulation says and what it requires. Um, and, um, um, in my opinion, no offense to planning staff, this code provision could stand some, uh, clarification. Um, that said, I, um, it's my conclusion that the first sentence of section nine dash fifty dash twenty C controls. And that it's an unambiguous provision and that it says a legal non-conforming structure may be replaced as long as the activity does not increase the non-conformity. There's only one condition in that, um, sentence, and that is not increasing the non-conformity. In this case, the non-conformity is not being increased. My reasons for coming to that conclusion are several. Number one, um, if A, B, and C in that, um, section were to be um, requirements in the conjunctive, there should be an end at the end of A and, and A and D at the end of A and, A and D at the end of B. As written, they stand as separate provisions of that section. The, one of the, um, things that is very important to me in reaching this conclusion is that the various terms that are used here all have definitions in the code. If they did not have definitions, I think we'd be dealing with something that was, uh, clearly ambiguous and the interpretation might be different. But the operative provisions here are all. But the operative provisions here are all defined, and therefore we can rely on those definitions to give meaning to these various provisions. Restoration is defined as bringing back an existing structure. That is not the case here, the existing structure is being demolished. The term reconstruction is used in subsection A, which which is um, uh, says a building permit for reconstruction must be issued within two years. Reconstruction has a definition in the code, which is which is uh, that it's a re-establishment of an existing structure, that's not what we're dealing with here either. So A doesn't apply. Um, B doesn't apply because a restoration, as I mentioned, is the bringing back of an existing structure, and we're not dealing with that. Demolition can occur, can be in whole or in part, so that use of that term isn't isn't determinative. But the term replacement has a definition in the code, which in my view, covers this application. Replacement is the complete removal of all or a portion of a structure and the substitution of the original structure with a new structure. That's exactly what's happening here. Now, I have to say that the application did focus uh, by its terms in writing on the criteria of nine dash fifty dash twenty. And accordingly, it's not unreasonable for the objectors, objectors to make objections based on the um, terms of the application. But my job is to apply the code correctly, without regard to how it's applied by anyone else in the room. I have to make a decision, what's the correct interpretation application of the code? Um, I think staff too has a mistake in the um, proposed resolution and in the staff comments regarding um, section. Where is it? Make sure I get it right. A different section of the code has been referred to, which I don't think applies at all. Which one is it? Do I have to go back to my notes here?
The current section, the current setback.
You look at your, let me look at your staff report. Uh, on there. Oh, Tom.
Determination or the staff report?
No, it was, it was mentioned in both, let me see if I can find it. Here it is. Seven dash twenty dash. Oh, no. Well, I'm not finding it, but there's a section of the code and I'm, I'm, oh, here it is, seven dash twenty dash eighty. Staff report states that under that section, legal non-conforming improvements may be replaced. Well, that's not correct because it doesn't talk about replacement in that section. Talks about expansion. And it says that if you expand within the extreme setback, which is expansion of an existing building, then you have to meet these certain requirements. So everybody's got some confusion here, and I think that it's based on the fact that the code is not the codes, various code sections are not coordinated in a way that they could be if it was bit better written. But in any event, the, the provision of section seven dash fifty dash twenty C is clear in its face and is unambiguous.
You you said seven dash fifty twenty C, and I think you meant nine dash fifty.
Nine dash fifty dash twenty C, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for the correction. It's clear on its face, it, Jody is correct that exceptions are to be narrowly construed, but that's a rule that is that follows um, when a rule is ambiguous, and this rule is clear on its face, that sentence is, is um, clearly states that you can replace the legal non-conforming structure if you don't increase the non-conformity, and this application doesn't do that. Now, I'm not saying that's the way it should be. Um, there's an argument to be made that from a policy standpoint, that if you're scraping a property and you're going back to square one, why wouldn't you just treat it like new development? But I don't get to decide that. That's not for me, that's a policy decision for planning staff and the board if they care to go there. I can only apply the rule as it's written. So I'm approving the application based on that construction and based on the fact that the um, technical requirements, the code are satisfied, we don't seem to have any issues about that. The um, the issue of um, act, the access issue was raised, who raised it in a letter?
Joe Wells.
Joe Wells raised the issue, but as staff has said, it would, you know, in my opinion, it would be nice. There were some improvements made there, but we, we don't have any jurisdiction require change. So that has to stay the way it is unless the applicant decides for safety reasons to 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 make a bet. That said, there are some changes I want to make to the proposed hearing officer determination. On um, first I have a question. Height is, the applicant has represented height as being less than permitted by code? Is that accurate?
That's what's presented, yeah.
Either at?
Height limit of this?
It'll be compliant or less?
Compliant or less, or not necessarily less, is that what?
Well, I'd have to bring up the plans to look, would you like me to do that?
No, I just want to know if it was represented that it would be a certain number, oh, and and that, because there's no number in the
Sure.
in this, and I try to figure out if we need a number or if that gets determined at building permit.
It typically gets reviewed by the zoning department in detail.
So there isn't any representation here as far as that goes, that you're committed to something, some specific number, you're just committing to compliance, is that right?
We are committing to compliance.
On um, page four of the determination subsection M, I'd like to, that was the one I was searching for, um, maybe that I didn't find. I want to delete the sentence that says pursuant to seven dash twenty dash eighty, the legal non-conforming improvements may be replaced. That sentence should come out in its entirety. Under subsection twelve, I'd like to change the reference, uh, the first line, nine dash fifty dash twenty uh, to nine dash fifty dash twenty C. And delete, and on the second line, delete everything in the second line except the word replaced, since those other provisions don't come into play. Expansion, repair, etc., we're not dealing with those. Um, and also delete after the word replaced, but leave the word replaced. Uh, and then at the next line, delete the balance of the sentence at the beginning line through with the standards in the section, just delete that. And after the word replaced on the second line, I want to add, as long as the activity does not increase the non-conformity, which is a quote from the section. After that sentence, I want to add another sentence that says the application meets this requirement. Did you follow all that?
Um, I got
I can give it to you, but
Yeah.
when we're finished, but I want everybody to know what I'm doing, so that's why I'm, I'm, I'm uh, doing the word smithing here, because I want everybody to know about that, okay? There's not a lot more. The next change I have is on the following page five. We don't need the first sentence.
First sentence of what?
Sub three, or I'm sorry, condition three. I would like to delete the entire sentence, first sentence, delete the second sentence, and simply state the approval, this approval is for a maximum floor area of seven thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet. We don't need uh, the rest of it in there, and then the second sentence would stay about any additional floor area in the future. And we don't, okay. Okay, so as amended by my comments, I'm approving the application. And then you'll get it to me, it's fine, and we'll get it out as quickly as possible. For appeal provisions in the code that Jody knows about, if he decides he wants to go that way. And other than that, thank you all for attending, thank you for your participation. And good afternoon.
Thank you, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.